Um, and the last two pages will continue to be the NC DOT construction updates. And I'm many aware that um the Rockfish and Goffview project will start where they basically gearing up now. And so you'll start seeing that a little bit more intensely over the next couple of weeks. That is a multi-year project and will continue to bring you updates as that project um progresses along. And finally, from Public Works, they will begin mosquito spraying on May twenty-second and will continue throughout the summer on Thursday evenings, weather permitted. Um, final time for spraying will be determined at a later date, but Public Works did want me to squeeze that into the manager's report as well. And that concludes the manager's report from the National Public Works Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you. We live?
We're. It keeps going in and out. It's saying that it's live, but people are saying that it's not live. I don't know. It's live.
Well, I don't know.
It's live.
Because um I'm hearing from anyone.
It's, yeah, I think it's, you can hear it, yeah, okay. What do you, yes, it's live. It's live.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we are.
Vamo is live. Yeah, alright. Board member comments, I'll start with Commissioner Lee.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to say except for to tell all the staff and the police and the department one great job I've done here. Please give me some of these guys.
Thank you very much, sir. Commissioner Gray.
I just want to say I went to the Ed Herring picnic on Saturday morning. The park looks wonderful, just like it is. I know that we're planning on adding some new equipment out there, but it was a beautiful, clean place for people to go and there were children that came. Also, on Sunday, my grandson and his wife from Indiana, my great-grandchildren, came and I took them to the splash pad and the Reed's Journey. They did not want to leave the children there. They just all played together. And if you have grandchildren or great-grandchildren or small children, please take them over there because they will thoroughly enjoy.
Thank you. Commissioner Marley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have you to thank the staff.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Scola?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to get my notes because I, it's um. So there was a, it was a very, very busy weekend. Um, before I even get to that, um, I know that a lot of people were upset at my comments at the um top it out. And I apologize, you know, uh, I get very um. Passionate, that's, yes, that's a very good word. I do get passionate. When, when something bothers me to the core, I, 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 I speak very, very freely and I sometimes go off on my tangent and I apologize for some of my comments. So uh, I'm sorry that to those I, I may have offended with my um harsh comments. So moving on from that, oh, can we get the light on in here? Is it meant to be dark?
It's cold. No?
Never mind, never mind. Okay, other comments. So we had quite a busy uh few things this weekend. We had the pet fest and that was crazy. We didn't have the unfortunate, we didn't have the water skiing squirrel. Um, but there was, was a petting zoo. Um, I got to see the police officer's um puppy. That's an awesome little puppy there. Um, they had the petting zoo. They had um, they had the dogs for adoption out there. It was really, really fun. I had a, I had a good time. I brought Nadia, my boxer, out there. She enjoyed it. She, there was no complaints from her. She got plenty of treats. Um, then later that afternoon, went to the Ed Herring Park and also it was a good time. Um, we had the barbecue out there. They had the music going, a lot of kids playing on the equipment there. Um, I, I agree like what Commissioner Gray said, it doesn't need a lot of work to it. Uh, I think we were, are discussing with some uh people there. We were talking about maybe a coat of paint at most. It, it doesn't really need a lot of work. Then also later that evening, we had the Police Foundation Ball. Um, I attended. It was a really good time. It was good to see um our, our police force um uh being able to enjoy themselves and, you know, they, they worked long hours, hard stuff, and uh it was really good to see them out and about. Um, then also I had one more thing about the fishing derby. So Assassin had contacted me about um the cleanliness at the park. And I agree, especially the, 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 the lake catches everything. And he had gotten with this conservation group, uh, it's essentially a holder for fishing filament to try to keep it out of the lake. The gentleman's name is Brad Powers. He's not going to hold those residents, but he wanted to reach out to me and see if there's something he can do to assist to try to keep our lake beautiful. Essentially, it's a PVC pipe and it's just able to put their spare filaments, leftover filament filament you may see in the water to try to recycle it. The devices, the waste devices are not expensive. I told him I have no problems paying out of pocket for something like that. Anything to keep our lake park beautiful. Um, I just want to give a, a shout out to him. His name is Brad Powers. So he was the one that actually approached me about it. So I just wanted to recognize him for that. And uh, so more to follow. I'll make sure I get with the town manager and talk to Brad to see about implementing these devices to catch this filament that's stuck in the water. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Porton, Dr. McCray?
Uh, it's very short. It's good to see everybody. I didn't go to the Ed Herring Park lookout. I heard it was a good turnout. I did enjoy myself at the Police Foundation Gala as well. And uh, just reminding everyone, because I know probably at the end of the meeting, a lot of people will leave. The Prime Movers are hosting their daddy, daughter, um, I always get it mixed up, daddy, daughter, mother, son. Fans on Saturday are still accepting from late registration if anybody is interested in today. So it starts at six o'clock on Saturday at Parks and Rec. So, oh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Porton, Dr. McCray. Saturday was a very busy day at Hope Mills. The morning kicked off Pet Fest. In the afternoon, later on that morning, at Ed Herring Park, which, which was well-attended, good since uh a lot of parents, a lot of children came. Of course, there was a lot of pets in the Pet Fest as well. Uh, that night, we had the uh Police Foundation Gala Ball and that's a big shout out and a big thanks to Debbie Jones uh and everybody that worked on that project. It was a very big success. But there was also some, these were external events. There were also events in the rec center as well on Saturday as every room was filled with some type of activity. The entire building was full on Saturday. So you had all the rooms full, then you had events outside that were all very well-attended. And that's across from everybody in Hope Mills that were attending these events. So I just kind of wanted to highlight how busy Saturday was and it's, it's just continuing to show us how more popular our recreational, Parks and recreational programs are and how valued they are to our community. And I just wanted to share that. Tomorrow night, uh, Chancellor Pin on it, State of the Town Address tomorrow night at six over in the Fire Department. Now, we're going to look at um where, where we are, where we've been, and where we're going. You're going to hear something about a rearview mirror tomorrow night. And then you're going to hear something about a windshield. But you're going to have to come to listen about both of them. That's all I have for uh for my comments. I'll go into presentations. Number three, item A, proclamation recogn- recognizing Public Works Week twenty twenty-five under cap two for Mr. Marley. Would you read that?
Yes, sir. National Public Works Week, proclamation, May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Public Works Professionals focuses on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustaining and sustaining communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the town of Hope Mills. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and elected officials in the town of Hope Mills to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in the community. And whereas the year twenty twenty-five marks the sixth and fifth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And for now being resolved, Mayor Jesse Bellflowers do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies in activity to grants and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health system, health, safety, and quality of life. Proclaiming this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Marley. Our next. Next item is B, proclamation recognizing International Human Resources Day, twenty twenty-five, Commissioner Scola. Would you honor us by reading that?
I will, Mayor. Thank you. As again, my human resources was my second MOS in the Army, not by choice. Anyways, International Human Resources Day, twenty twenty-five. Whereas human resource HR professionals provide critical services in both public and private organizations, agencies, and businesses throughout the world. And whereas these professionals help employers and employees adapt to an ever-changing and competitive work environment while responding to workplace, workplace needs and economic challenges. And whereas dedicated HR professionals at the town of Hope Mills are committed to identifying and dress and addressing HR issues that most affect our staff. And whereas HR professionals strive to review and discuss HR issues in a prompt and impartial way. And whereas, public recognition of human resources professionals underscores their role as a valuable service, not only by making them more visible, but to, to lend assurance to all Town of Hope Mills employees that they will receive the support they need and deserve in all aspects of employment. And whereas the Town of Hope Mills recognizes the importance of human resources professionals, both here in the United States and abroad, and encourages all others to learn more about the career opportunities available in human resources. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jesse Bellflowers, and the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners thereby pro- proclaim May twentieth, twenty twenty-five as International Human Resources Day in the Town of Hope Mills and commend its observance to all citizens proclaiming this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Commissioner Scola. Would you like to recognize some human resource professionals that may be in this room tonight?
Where, where are our human? Human resources personnel, please stand up. There, here we go. There we go. HR in the house.
Alright. Item C, proclamation recognizing Memorial Day, cap four. I have that one. Proclamation Memorial Day, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Memorial Day was first widely served on May thirtieth, eighteen sixty-eight, and called Declaration Day to commemorate the, the nation's Civil War dead by decorating their graves. And whereas Memorial Day evolved to commemorate American military personnel who died in all wars and was declared a national holiday by Congress in nineteen seventy-one to celebrate the last Monday in May. And whereas each Memorial Day, Americans remember the debt of gratitude we owe to our veterans who gave their lives for our country. And whereas thousands of Ameri- men and women have given their lives for their country and many thousands still, more still bear severe disabilities and the scars of war. And by remembering these, we are reminded that the cost of war and peace is great. And whereas we continue to rely on our brave and steadfast men and women in uniform to defend our freedoms, we commemorate this noble American holiday. We honor those who fell in defense of our freedom and we honor them in our memory. And now therefore, being resolved that I, Jesse Bellflowers, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, do hereby urge all citizens to observe this day in honor and in memory of the thousands of American men and women who have answered the call to duty in defending the hard-won freedoms we enjoy today and who have sacrificed their lives in defense of our country proclaiming this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five. I apologize, I'm, I'm very passionate, as you could tell, of what this day means to me. I'd like to remind everyone that VFW Post ten, six thirty quarterly invites you to the Town of Hope Mills for our Memorial Day Ceremony that is Monday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. It will start at four o'clock and it will be in the Veterans Memorial Park right, right outside. Item D. Sure a lot of folks are here to hear this one. No question about it. Let's get to it. FY twenty twenty-six budget presentation. There are no attachments. So we'll kick it off. Our town manager will have his opening manager statement about the proposed budget. Followed by Drew will have some commentary. And then maybe some comments from the board and then if not, we'll move right on to public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget message. Uh, as the Town of Hope Mills continues to be a thriving, fulfilling place to live, work, employ, a dedicated team of highly quali- uh high-quality professionals remains committed to maintaining a positive balance between residential and commercial growth. This growth is essential for enhancing the services we provide to our citizens while continuing to invest in the long-term success of our community. Our pursuit of excellence is rooted in strategic and thoughtful planning, the development of strong partnerships, and the leveraging of external, external funding to support key improvements. We prioritize transparency, ethics, professionalism, and outstanding customer service, and we actively seek innovative ways to optimize our resources through cutting-edge technology. However, achieving this level of success is not without its challenges. As the saying goes, excellence doesn't show up until adversity does. In accordance with the laws and requirements of the North Carolina General Statutes, I hereby submit to the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners the proposed budget for the fiscal year ending beginning July one, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This budget is designed to keep the town on a steady course to meet its strategic objectives over the coming year. In terms of the overview, as your town manager, I'm recommending an operating budget of twenty-two million eighty-three thousand dollars, which reflects our continued commitment to fiscal responsibility while making key investments in public safety, infrastructure, inspections, and quality of life enhancements. This proposed budget includes a total avalon tax rate of forty-five cents per one hundred of assessed value, representing a six cents decrease from fiscal year twenty twenty-five. While this rate is fourteen cents above the revenue neutral rate of thirty-one cent, it generates nine million two hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars in revenue to support essential services. Within the fourteen cents above revenue neutral is ten cents of tax to cover the budget shortfall of two million seventy thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars tied to the sales tax distribution. Notably, this is the lowest tax rate Hope Mills has seen in the past decade. Though it remains a bare-bones rate, some services had to be reduced to maintain. Key commitments: Public safety. We have two additional police lieutenants and two additional vehicles to enable twenty-four-hour operation of the John W. Hodges Public Safety Building. Total public safety allocation is twelve million six hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, including eight million seventy-one thousand eight hundred for police operations, three million nine hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred for fire services, and six hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five for inspections. In terms of public works, total allocation is three million three hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five, which includes five hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty for street maintenance, one million four hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-five for sanitation. For Parks and Recreation, total allocation is two million four hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred, which includes one million two hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred and fifty for athletics and field maintenance, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred for programs and events. School Resource Officers. Continued support of the School Resource Officers in Cumberland County Schools with a town-funded contribution of three hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars beyond reimbursed salary expenses that we received from Cumberland County Public Schools. Additional capital and operational investments. As you saw, we had a little snuffle with the uh livestream. In this budget, it uh will include the upgrades to this boardroom that will bring the AVI system and video uh uh system up to a hundred percent. Um, new LED meshes centered um signs at Hope Mills Lake, light towers for improved security at town parks, uh continued ADA transition plan implementation for Public Works, new vehicles for inspections, Parks and Recreation, and Fire, human resource software to streamline onboarding benefits, administration, and to promote paperless transactions. Um, general fund revenues and expenditures are located within your budget books that reflect detailed information tied to a breakdown in solid waste fees, state share revenues, recreation tax, and fund balance from general fund revenues, as well as capital outlay, cost of living adjustment, employment benefits, debt service, and ongoing projects from general fund expenditures. All capital items have been appropriated and all debt service requirements have been appropriated as well to meet our debt obligations. Power bill and storm water fund revenues, expenditures are also outlined in this budget with all debt service requirements having been appropriate to meet our debt obligations as well. In conclusion, this proposed budget reflects our continued dedication to responsible stewards of our taxpayers' dollars as well as high service standards. With it, while it is lean, it maintains a strong foundation for core services and critical improvements. I remain confident that through collaborative leadership and community support, Hope Mills will continue to thrive and build upon its success. As we look to the future, the outlook of the Town of Hope Mills remains overwhelmingly positive. Our commitment to evaluating projects and personnel needs continues to reflect our high standards for service delivery, even as we outpace much of the region in terms of growth. Sustaining and enhancing that growth requires careful planning, resource management, and a forward-looking approach. Several major projects will continue progressing forward towards completion during this fiscal year, making it more critical than ever to prioritize our programming and resource needs and ultimate budget. As we advance our strategic planning efforts, we remain dedicated to working in close coordination with our elected officials and engaged citizens to refine our goals and objectives, ensuring that our service standards remain at a high level our residents deserve and expect. Town staff has been instrumental in shaping this budget, specifically our finance director continually demonstrating the innovation, adaptit- uh adaptability, and a renewed commitment to the community that we serve. I commend them for their hard work, professionalism, and transparency. Their con- contributions help fulfill one of my primary goals as the town manager, to unite our elected officials, our staff, and most importantly, citizens of Hope Mills through collaborative, responsive governance. This budget reflects my recommendations following numerous departmental meetings, input from our elected officials, and a careful evaluation of our current service demands. It represents a funding level that enables the town to maintain, and where feasible, enhance existing services while also incorporate necessary organizational changes to deliver the highest-quality programs to our community. These decisions did not come without challenges. In order to maintain the proposed tax rate, several difficult cuts may, had to be made. As with any budget, it is important to acknowledge that the external forces may impact our projections. Therefore, the revenue and expenditure figures presented here are based on a conservative forecast for the coming fiscal year. I would also like to highlight a significant achievement. With the support from state project funding and federal ARCA disbursements, the town has encumbered more project funds than at any point in our entire history. While completing this work places additional pressure on an already-stretched team, I have full confidence in our ability to meet these goals just as we have time and time again. Together with focus and dedication, we will continue to build a strong, resilient, and thriving Hope Mills. I present to you twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget.
Thank you, Chancellor. Drew, would you like to continue?
Okay, you've heard the budget message and you have copies of the budget in front of you. And in just a minute, I'll tell you what you have in front of you and um everything that you have. In order to balance this budget and get it to the point where it was a forty-five cent tax rate, we did have to use um some of our reserves and some of our project funding. Um, I'm not that comfortable with using that much of the project funding. Um, the reserves used in the budget is similar to what we've done in the past for one-time capital items. But as the finance director, and I've talked to the uh manager about this and the mayor, as the finance director, I do, would like to recommend that when we have our budget workshop, that we see if we can redo close accounts to a level that I feel more comfortable. But it's still at the uh council's discretion what they would like in this budget. Um, if you have any questions or anything about the budget, the manager and I will be more than happy to address any questions. Um, but what you have in front of you, just so you know, those that have been here before, same thing. You have the proposed budget book. You have the same exact thing. This is my copy, that myself and the manager have. So with full transparency, you have everything that we have. The very front part here before you get to the tab is the actual budget document. So in that, you'll have the general fund, then you have, where you have the budget message first, then you have the general fund, then you have power bill and storm water, then you have capital outlay, then you have the salary um schedule, and then the fee schedule. Any questions you have, I'll make them in front. Now, when we get to the tabs, each tab is a different department, a different portion of the budget. And it is everything that each department submitted to the manager and I for this budget. It's all the justification and everything for every number that they have requested. Now, the second book that you have is the Police Department justification book. Their justification was actually thicker than the regular budget, so I had to make extra copies. So you've got, every department is in here. Tab nine is the Police Department. You only have a few pages in my binder, but their justification's in a separate book because it was so thick. I didn't want you to have uh one giant book. So that's what you have in front of you tomorrow. We will get the proposed budget on the town's website. Are there any questions for either myself or the manager?
Questions? Commissioner Gray?
I've had the revenue neutral rate. How did you come up with that thirty-one cents? How did you come up with that thirty-one cents?
Okay, there's a formula that you use to use the last ten years of your ad政 taxes. I should have brought that sheet with me, but I didn't know you'd add that. You take the last ten years and, let me think for a minute, because I've calculated this back in February.
Is that the formula that the institution you've got sent out?
There's a formula that they use, there's a template that the local government commission does. Fill that out for the last ten years, and then it gives you a number, but then you have to also calculate what is your growth percentage. That's where the last ten years comes in. So you take, how much taxes did we receive last year, based on our evaluation? This year, you have your new valuation. So what gives you that same exact number of revenue per tax? So for instance, if last year, our, just say our tax value was one billion dollars, and this year, our tax value is one point five billion dollars, well, what gives you the same exact amount of revenue for that increase in value because our values increased this year? So once you get that rate, then you add the percentage growth for the last ten years to that rate, because it can't be identical, there is growth in the account. So you add that growth percentage, and then that gives you your revenue neutral rate.
Well, I was under the impression, and I was told this by state officials as well as local officials, the revenue neutral rate is the rate that you come up with that before any revaluation was done. Say I paid last year a thousand dollars in taxes, I'm just using that. Then the revenue neutral rate should put me down where I pay a thousand dollars again this year, ignoring that we had a revaluation done. So taking this, you're not lowering taxes, you're actually going to raise a fourteen cents per a hundred dollar valuation. So we're not lowering taxes.
We're lowering the rate.
We're raising it fourteen cents.
Right, you're correct, but the rate is being lowered, fifty-one to forty-five.
But that is, but then if you lift it at forty-five cents, we're going to be paying on that revaluation of what it, that mine went up three hundred thousand dollars. Now you look, say I paid a thousand, I'm going to be paying three thousand this year. And so are everybody else, that they're raising up with that revaluation. What we need to be doing is, is sticking with the thirty-one cents to not raise taxes. And that's where I stand right there for all the citizens in Hope Mills.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Craver. Mayor Porton, Dr. McFerrin?
I, I, um, I hear what Commissioner Craver is saying, and I, I do think we'll get more into this in our budget workshop, but that, that increase is all public safety. So if we want to cut, if we want that tax rate to be lowered, to show us where you want us to cut it.
A lot of it is public safety.
And Mayor Porton, I will add that, as I read before, ten cents of the fourteen is just to cover the shortfall in the county. So even though the revenue neutral number was thirty-one, we had to raise it to forty-one as a starting point, just to cover.
It's that same revenue since we got last year.
Yes. And, and also, the remaining four cents is all public safety.
Any other comments? Or I'll read your mind?
Oh, no more.
Good.
Two more clues, to have that police department open twenty-four hours, seven days a week because we really, really do need that. And in order to achieve to do that, we have to hire two lieutenants.
That's great.
Two lieutenants.
That's great.
Um, to supervise and two cars. So that, that is all included in this increase that you all said.
Thank you very much, Mayor Porton. Our current tax, property tax rate is fifty-one cents. The proposed property tax rate for next year is forty-five cents. Decrease of six cents. I'm going to read, I did some research, and I asked the finance director, send me the rate, the property tax rates the last ten years, and hope not. He did better than that. He sent me all the way back to two thousand eight. So bear with me, I'm going to read them. In two thousand eight, the property tax rate was forty-six. Two thousand nine, forty-six. Two thousand ten, interesting year, because that was a reevaluate, thirty-nine. Now, before I get any further down this list, which I will, all of these years that I'm talking about, we do not lose any sales tax revenue. This year, we lost two million dollars. That's ten cents that's not in any of these figures that I'm about to read to you. No. Two thousand eleven, forty-two. So in two thousand ten, reevaluate, it was thirty-nine, and then in twenty-eleven, it went to forty-two. Twenty-twelve, forty-two. Twenty-thirteen, forty-two. Twenty-fourteen, forty-two. Twenty-sixteen, forty-six. Twenty-seventeen, forty-six. And then we get to twenty-eighteen. Any guess what happened in that year? Another reevaluation, where tax value just through, a decrease, but the revenue neutral stayed at forty-six, amazing, in twenty-eighteen. So, let's move on. Twenty-nineteen, forty-six. Twenty-twenty, forty-six. Twenty-twenty-one, forty-six. Twenty-twenty-two, forty-six. Twenty-twenty-three, forty-six, a lot of forty-six. Twenty-twenty-four, forty-six, and last year, it went to fifty-one. And tonight, the proposal, it goes down to forty-five, the lowest in all of these years for the past ten. But we also had the two million dollars sales tax loss in this year's budget, and it's not in any of these years where, where we are tonight. And I'll send this out if anybody needs it. No secret, not hiding anything, just want to make sure that the numbers are right, that's why I asked the finance director, because sometimes seeing is believing, and in this case, numbers. And we're going to switch up something in the next couple of weeks, and I'll ask the board for approval very soon. In the past, we've always presented the budget, had a workshop, then went right into budget adoption. We're going to change it. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for June second. We're going to change that meeting to a, to a public hearing in this room on Monday at six. The twenty-two million dollar budget, which is the highest in Hope Mills, I say that every year, the twenty-two million dollar proposed budget, with the proposed property tax rate of forty-five cents, which is six cent lower, has now been presented. It will be on the website tomorrow. The entire document, all line items, everything that's in our book will be on that website tomorrow, the front part. You'll have it all. You'll have two weeks to look through it because it's our budget. You'll have two weeks to look through it, six o'clock on Monday, June second, in this room. This board will hear from you before we have our budget workshop, which will be on June ninth, the following Monday at six in this room. And then we'll have our regular board meeting on June sixteenth, another Monday, in this room at seven, where the board will make a decision on the proposed budget. But before we get to sharpening pencils, I'm going to announce, number ten blades, we want to hear from the public. Would the board approve these three consideration dates?
I made the motion to approve that.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor? Motion carries. So that's our timeline for the next three weeks.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, sir.
I, I was going to go to the discussion, I just got a kind of statement to make there. Uh, I would ask that, um, I'm glad we are doing the public hearing, and while the board is, uh, interested in hearing what the citizens have to say about the budget, um, I would ask that if anybody has any questions for the ninety, please allow our town staff, our town manager, and our town finance director a chance to answer questions beforehand. That's what we, that's what they're here for, that's their job, to answer to the citizens as well as we do. So, uh, between ninety, if you have any questions, please, please reach out to one of these and give them a chance to explain to them.
Commissioner Marley, thank you very much. I want to add to that, that includes this board. That includes this board. Now, for those folks that cannot come at the public hearing on June second, if you go to our town website, and you look at the very top front page, you're going to see an icon called engage Hope Mills. All you have to do is submit your question or comment right there. Ashley gets them, the board gets them, the town manager gets them, and the quicker that you send those comments in and those questions, that will help, really help the town staff and the board as we navigate through a twenty-two million dollar budget that represents the services to be provided to the town. Now make no mistake, one of the things that we heard through different public forums is that we wanted the police station open twenty-four seven. A lot of folks don't know that the police station is only open Monday through Friday, and it closes up at stores at five. You have a lobby there that you can walk in, and then if you need any assistance, you have to make a phone call. We're going to change that, at least that's the proposal, and that's a big part of what this budget represents, is public safety. We're going to do something for the very first time, and that's have twenty-four seven police operate in, in that seventeen million dollar public safety facility. And a lot of folks didn't, do not know, but it's closed. Now, I don't have to tell anyone about the need for public safety. So a large part of this proposed budget is right there. We also, this past year, picked up the SRO mission from the county schools. That was not budgeted last year, not in our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. None of that was budgeted last year. But for the safety of our schools, we engaged in public safety in the school system, not knowing all of the costs that were involved in doing this. Because the safety of our children, the teachers, and the staff, and our schools in this community is paramount. Can you honestly put an amount? I'll get you, I'll get you, Commissioner Marley. Can you put an amount on, on safety? So I just wanted to highlight this, is that the public capacity we have provided, and that is a huge part of what this twenty million dollar, twenty-two million dollar budget looks like. This is almost a bare bones budget as presented. One thing that the finance director did not say is that there has been sacrifices made by every department. The recommended COLA this year is one point five for our valued talent employees. That's a sacrifice too. So when I say it's a bare bones budget, I mean that, but it's our budget. And, and I'm, all I'm asking is that we navigate this together. That's what I'm asking. Not point fingers, not playing games, not beating people up on social media. Let's do this and work this together and have a very, very good budget. Commissioner Marley?
Um, going back to what you said about public safety and the police department, I guess a lot of this, this part of those options, um, and Chancellor or the finance director, and you may have been known to, that with this budget, even though we are getting some reimbursement from the school board, we're still at, what's the deficit on there?
Roughly three hundred fifty thousand.
So where the deficit of three hundred fifty thousand dollars to maintain with the SROs in our schools for the safety of our, um, our kids and our, our younger citizens, so that's another added expense too, that they all need to make sure everybody was aware of this. I thought that was pretty important.
It is. Thank you very much, Commissioner Marley. The next is scroll.
Um, Juror, I can't remember if it's not until we get the completed budget, but I know in the back of the previous ones, I've seen like the actual breakdown of where we get our tax electronic, like it had like real estate, Walmart was the big thing. Is that in the completed one, or is it in here and I just didn't see that?
That is actually our top ten taxpayers. That is one of the reports in the back of the hearing financial audit.
Okay.
So that's where that's from. But it's still, um, it plays into this as well. If any new development that we get, uh, some of the new developments that are coming in could be higher in the same, uh, aspects of those. So, yeah, that's in the statistical section of the financial report.
I remember reading those, and I still remember where, where financial paperwork has been.
That just shows, uh, the top ten taxpayers where the top part of our tax comes from.
Okay, so we move on to public hearings, any other comments from the board?
I just like, thank the manager and finance director for bearing us this far to not back.
I'll, I'll add to that, and I want to thank every department head who had, who had input into this. This was not an easy endeavor, not at all. So my hats off not only to Chancellor and Drew, but every department head and every employee that works for our town to deliver, to deliver services to our community. We'll move on to public hearings, I, under item four, first one up is item A, D and G zero zero six dash twenty-five rezoning of fifty point seven six plus or minus acreage from R five C, C Z to R five C Z residential with conditional zoning or more restrictive zoning for empty lot nine hundred and seventy-three plus or minus feet from the southwestern intersection of Golf View Road and Suchek Drive, R E I D zero four one four one two seven two seven six zero zero zero, submitted by GMR Capable LLC, unders and that's under cap five.
Um, Mayor, before she starts, I'd like to, oh yeah, to get some point of clarification. Uh, for this case, I want to make sure this, uh, is spoken to the record. This is a conditional zoning approval request for a site plan amendment. This change is This change is for the approval of a change from single family residential units on a portion of the approved site plan to townhouse, townhome residential units. Um, and as what we've said before, um, and I've said several times, when it's conditional zoning, there are conditions that can be placed on the approval, but they have to be mutually agreed upon between the board and the developers. Um, I'd also like to clarify some things. There's been, uh, my staff and I want to commend our planner with it, Mrs. Whitehead, because there's been a, a significant amount of correspondences that we've had to field because there was some misinformation put out there in the general public, specifically on social media. There are some things I want to say specifically that this is not. This is not a proposal to connect any roadway to the golf acres community. The site plan does not reflect any roadway connection in that area. I will say that the approved site plan that is adjacent, a portion of it adjacent to golf acres that was approved several years ago still remains an apartment complex. The condition to place privacy fencing along that area still remains. The condition to place vegetative buffers in that area still remains. There is no connection that will open up vehicular access to this community based on this proposal. And I will say it again, this is simply a request to take an existing site plan and change out one type of residential unit as a single family residential area to a townhouse for sale area. And it's the area adjacent to the golf course that you'll see in the upcoming presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Ellen.
Town of Hope Mills and staff is seeking application requests for site plan revision on previously approved site plans for fifty point seven six acres plus or minus of land involving the parcel identification, I think that was listed earlier. Subject property is adjacent to the golf acre subdivision, town property previously known as the golf course and the cross the street from Eagle Wood Forest subdivision. Access will most likely be from Golf View Road. The changes requested to the original approved site plan include changing the location of the garages that are among the apartments and going from single family homes to individually owned townhomes. They will still, still will adhere to the original conditions that were agreed upon, such as installing six foot vents between the apartments and the golf acre subdivision and installing the vegetative buffer between the townhomes and the town property. The Cumberland County Joint Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend the approval during their regularly scheduled meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The Southwest Cumberland Use Plan calls for low density residential and open space. This request does fall within the current guidelines. It, it does not fall within the current guidelines, but it does complement the surrounding areas. As the area is zoned, it used to be zoned P and D R seven five and it is now currently zoned R five with positional zoning. And as mentioned earlier, they're not requesting a rezoning. They're requesting to approve a different change site plan from the originally approved site plan. Um, and here is showing the subject property with the, uh, surrounding areas of golf acres to the right, which is the east, town property to the west, throwing, uh, forest subdivision south of it and even with forest subdivision, this is more of a or at least more of a property. This is showing utilities where it has water and sewer nearby. And so I have a different photo that are diagram from GIS showing the proper zoning. This whole property is zoned R five CZ. Um, but at the time it took the county a while to update the system and they just recently updated it because they got a new system that they're working with and it took them several months to get it updated. So I do actually have a different one that we would like to see it, but, um, the whole lot is actually rezoned R five CZ. And then this is, uh, showing low density to the right, open space is a portion of the property and here is some views of the property off of Golf View. And that's the town owned building in the back to the right. Residential across the street. Wanted to also add, um, if there's any questions about density, because I know that kind of came up in some of the comments we've heard. So this property is zoned R five CZ. Based on the density requirement, that actually allows twenty-nine dwelling units per acre. Um, what the owners are asking for is a total of four hundred four residences. At fifty acres point seven six, fifty point seven six acres and twenty-nine dwellings per acre, they actually could put up to one thousand four hundred fifty dwellings and they're asking for four hundred four. Um, the original approved plan that they still can move forward with includes thirty-one townhomes that was approved, forty-six single family homes that they also called cottages and three hundred apartments, which is three hundred seventy-seven residences. So the difference that they're asking for is twenty-seven dwellings. So just food for thought. But, um, if there's any questions?
Before I ask for a motion to open up public hearing, thank you, Emma. I want to read something into the record. An email that was sent from Rodney Sherrell, member manager from Bridgewater. This was sent to the entire board and staff about false narratives. So I'm going to read it in the record because it obviously but maybe I just need to read it. The false narrative is this. The Golf View developers have worked out a plan and have secondary accesses from adjacent neighborhoods of golf acres and Whitemore. That is not true. Never was true. Never been true. So when we talk about misinformation, that is definitely one of them. In their response from Bridgewater, which is GMR, to be clear, we have never had any conversations with the town planning board, community leaders or council to have a secondary access from any adjoining neighborhoods. Golf Acres, Whitemore. To include roads previously mentioned, Krampton Road, Pringle Way, or any other word, roads. I have this in light. Right here. Like I said, it was sent to the entire board. Our overall concept demonstrates we have no connecting roads to include buildings, obstructing access or designated areas which are separated and denoted as protected wetland space. Hopefully this clears up any false statements moving forward and brings clarity and greater understanding to our project and its future development. As our partnership greatly appreciates the beauty and history of Hope Mills, we pledge to keep that tradition going and we are excited to be a part of the Hope Mills community, looking forward. Signed by Rodney Sherrell, member manager, Bridgewater Holdings, GMR. I don't know how much clearer this document can make or address false narratives, misinformation about something that was posted on social media that was clearly wrong to begin with. I know because I went there myself. As many, as many folks know, I worked tirelessly as a town commissioner to close Krampton Road. So if I get a little personal about this, I am. I really am. I will say this again. I said it before. The integrity of our neighborhoods are not for sale and will never be compromised. The integrity. And GMR never looked at Pringle. Never. Never brought it up. It's not part of the plan. It's nope, not even been discussed in any way. Not any. I went down to that coal site myself. And Commissioner Craver knows it does. I talked to her from there. Boy, I'm not done. So if I'm a little passionate, it's because of the level that this one issue reached. Because I got a lot of phone calls, a lot of text messages and a lot of in-person questions about this one issue. The only thing that I could continue to say that it is wa, it's not correct. The information is not correct. To a point where finally the project managers, GMR, Bridgewater, sent it to us in white. And I wanted to read that into the record going forward. So hopefully this issue will not come up again. That the neighborhoods of Whitemore and Golf Acres will be compromised because they will not. Commissioner Craver?
One thing we did find out is that the town owns two or lots over there behind Pringle. I didn't know that until it was researched and we were told by one of the planners of the county. And there's one of them that's what, one point four acres? And what was the other side? Do you remember what other side that is? That land? And I think it was what it was given when Bill Tyson built those homes. That was a dedication to the town for a recreational area for Whitemore and Golf Acres. And it was just never developed. So I don't know if we want to look into the future, maybe develop in that for that community.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Do you have a motion to open public hearing?
I have a motion.
Have a motion. That's second half there. Seeing none, post-public hearings now open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of proposed ZNG dash zero zero six dash twenty-five rezoning? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of ZNG zero zero six dash twenty-five rezoning? Seeing none? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the proposed ZNG dash zero zero six dash twenty-five rezoning? Please come to the mic, state your name.
How y'all doing? Robinson City Act two three six four Downdick Street. Hey, what was the total number of possible houses in sort of that depth, if we're going right area? Eleven hundred? Fourteen hundred. Fourteen, baby? So fourteen, possible fourteen hundred houses going up and down. The infrastructure. But potentially, potentially they could. Potentially they could have, correct? That's all I'm asking. Potentially they could, if they want to. It's conditional zoning, so the proposed number of units that are on the site plan are the total number of units that they can propose. That's it. Four hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, I couldn't call you a liar because you haven't uttered any untruth. What you guys have done systematically is you have hidden the information from us, okay? You say you don't have a strategic plan. This manifests it right here. Misinformation, disinformation, social media. Where's it on the website? Where's it on the official record? He did this stuff.
Sir, please direct your comments.
I am. I'm getting that. I've been playing my time. I'm getting that.
Is this zoning case?
Would you be quiet for a second and let me get to it?
As long as it's, as long as you're talking about the zoning cases?
I am.
You can proceed.
I am.
If not.
Are you done?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying, none of this information before was on the website, okay? You keep hiding it. You don't want to tell us what it is. There's a bunch of people here dealing with this thing got approved, let alone we're just going to modify it. You're talking about four hundred. It could be up to fourteen fifty. What's going to keep them from doing that? You give them this approval. They say we won't do more than four hundred. They could do fourteen fifty. Your own planning board said the whole Golf View Road is already overloaded and saturated. You guys don't have a strategic plan because you can't think outside your little cave? What about when they put a hard median down Golf View Road all the way to two ninety-five? What's that going to do for traffic? Hmm? It's already ten minutes in the morning to get out here on the Rockfish for Saturday, uh, on the weekday day in school. Are you going to put fourteen hundred more houses out there? Or four hundred? It doesn't matter. But that's right, Jesse. You just keep up there and I'm not lying. Oh, no, I'm an honorable man. I wouldn't lie by something like that. I'm just not telling you much of this information over there. Because you don't have anything that we can pin you against, say, this is what it said. I don't care what the guy said from the, from the builders. He's out there to get his money. But the bottom line is, is you obviously hate the people who live in Hope Mills down here on this end because now you're going to put all this traffic up to Golf View. Come off of the, uh, golf course. You can only make the right turn with a hard median in there.
Are you done?
But that's right.
You done?
Go ahead.
Are you done?
I'll go ahead. Yeah.
The original rezoning. I have the packet right here.
Mm-hmm.
The original rezoning was done on seven fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, that was last year.
In this room.
Mm-hmm.
With the public hearing that we have.
That's right.
And this was public.
When you go look at the website, you're playing.
It's my turn.
Oh, go ahead. All right, I'll wait. I get all night. I do too.
This is public record. It was a public hearing in this room about this case and the original site. So you cannot stand there and tell me that you didn't know. You may not have known that this was first approved then. That's why I have the packet now. We're not hiding anything, sir. Not anything. This is, if you go to our planning site on the webpage, you will find this very packet. It's there right now. If you go look for it, you'll find it. This was the original zoning before the one tonight. The original.
My turn? If that's where you're a fucking liar. It is on the website. We're not, I can say it. I can say it.
No, we're done.
Amendment, I can say it. You better get your lawyer going, buddy.
You're out of order.
Wake him up.
This is a public hearing. You've made your public comments.
I'm not done yet.
You are done.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. I can't, I can't.
And, and the mayor has the right.
The court on my side over there.
You're done, sir.
No, I'm not being disorderly. I'm allowed to have contentious discussions. You better wake your lawyer up.
I'm watching.
I'm not leaving. I am not. Are you telling me under the color of law, you're going to arrest me? And you probably have my civil rights. I am not, I am participating in the meeting. I am allowed to have a heated discussion.
You're not allowed to curse.
I will. I'm going to file nothing completely against you.
Get off. Like a gentleman. So, there's another person?
The person running the meeting is allowed to maintain order and when it gets disorderly, the person, uh, who is speaking is allowed is required to step down and if someone refuses to leave the meeting. I'm not going to get into a debate about profanity or not profanity, but there is, there is a, uh, level of decorum that's required for a public hearing.
You're an absolute liar. I think that's what you're not allowed to do.
And, and the mayor running the meeting has the right to maintain decorum of the public meeting. And where he pleads it's crossed the line, he has the right to ask him to step down.
Emily has no fault in this. I'm just sort of. Uh, I'm not a bore again. I just have a neutral, uh, question if you're allowed to ask. So I'm an numbers guy. So, I'm a numbers guy, as everybody knows, right? So say they have four hundred units. If you're not finding any rent from here for less than eighteen hundred, right? And say over the course of thirty years, the building really doesn't need its maintenance for, to give him parts, only about the thirty years. That's a total of two hundred fifty-nine million, two hundred thousand dollars, right? Did this builder will gain in revenue? Or in yield in his, in his pocket for profit? Is this builder offering any impact to the community? Two hundred fifty-nine, two hundred sixty million over the course of thirty years can go a really far way in our pockets. Like you said, you reduce the tax rate. I would just ask the board to reconsider thinking about asking him for some. And it does not have to be a part of the rest, I mean, let's put it toward the streets, let's put it toward public favor. But, uh, just a thought, truth about that.
I, I would add that if there is, uh, discussions between the, um, staff, the board, and developers about some type of agreement, uh, of that nature, that can't be used as a basis for consideration of this request. You know, we do have conversations with developers and things of that nature, I just want to point it out that see that if that became part of the discussion, that couldn't be used as a reason. Um, I do want to point out as well, um, in terms of the conversation regarding notices and things of that nature. Uh, as you stated, uh, Mayor, that this case was initially approved last year. Um, we typically place our zoning signs on the property two months in advance because we have to go through planning board before coming here. On that, um, um, sign that we put out in compliance with the North Carolina General Statutes in terms of posting for a public hearing, the staff has gone above and beyond by placing a QR code on that sign that gives access to the entire packet that you held up. So in essence, the packet that you held up from last year has been on our website since last year. And the packet for tonight's case has been on our website for two months. And so I do know that our staff has actually gone out and sent courtesy, uh, notices to people that are not even within the adjacent property. So I do know that we've gone above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that this particular case under consideration has been properly processed.
Thank you, I do mean like. See, that's kind of all wrapped, I think. Thank you very much, Eric. I'm not against any comments, as long as they're professional. I really am. As long as they're just decorum and profession. That's all that I ask. This is a public setting. It's not that I don't, don't want profanity, it's not that either. Just be professional in your comments and render them with the subject that we're talking about. But when the meeting turns belligerent and it starts to get to where I think unprofessional, then that's when we need to take it down a level or two. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to address that. I'm probably about as thick-skinned, I've been in that chair for years, and I've made all kinds of comments. Both in person and on social media. But all I'm asking, and I don't think it's too much, instead of hearing a public hearing and two, and also in public comments, is just be professional with the comments and keep the corner. That's all that I'm asking. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing? Second? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, public hearing is now closed, do we have an action by the board? More questions, okay?
Emily, so, looking at the changing for the, the, uh, why I think they went to townhouses is so, under the existing proposed zoning, they went from, uh, their setbacks to a zero lot line? Is it because of the space, why they had to go to?
Yeah, they will have to do zero lot line for the townhomes. Uh, because they will share what's called a firewall. So the lot line will be that firewall.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Craver?
Um, the twenty-seven dwellings, is that single dwellings or is that dwellings with so many apartments or townhouses in?
You mean the difference of the twenty-seven?
Now, you said there would be twenty-seven dwellings. I assumed you were talking about the new.
Sort of, so, I was talking about the difference of the dwellings, so originally they wanted to do, uh, a total of three hundred seventy-seven dwellings? Dwellings that include?
That's not the apartments we're talking about.
That included the, so, okay, originally they wanted to do thirty-one townhomes and forty-six single-family homes. And now instead they want to do a total of one hundred four townhomes instead of the single-family homes. So it's a difference of twenty-seven dwellings.
Okay, a difference of twenty-seven. You're talking about twenty-seven apartments that have townhomes that have them in a building?
They will share a firewall, yes.
Okay, so we're looking at how many per per dwelling? Are you talking about one townhouse and then next door to another townhouse?
Yes, the townhouses share one wall with each other, so it's, they're they're stacked next to each other, and they're individually owned. And they have a firewall between them, and that's where the property line is.
Okay, so we're increasing it all within a total of how many?
Twenty-seven. The apartment number stays the same, three hundred. But the single-family dwelling slash townhome, it's, it's all, it's all townhomes, but I'm using the single-family homes a little loosely. I'm saying that because they will be individually owned, the townhomes will be.
Okay, so there's going to be a total of three hundred apartments or townhomes?
The, the apartment number stays the same at three hundred, but the, um, purchasable residences goes up a number of twenty-seven. So it's going to be one hundred four townhomes, and those can be individually purchased.
Okay, a hundred and four, so that's an increase of twenty-seven homes. Okay.
Thank you. No problem.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Seeing none? Do we have an, do we have an action?
Good answer. Is ZNG-006-25, the town of Hope Mills, planning staff recommends approval of the site plan revision to the previously approved, proposed site plan for the R5 CZ residential position conditional zoning additional defines that the request is partially consistent with the Southwest County Land Use Plan 2013 designation. It does mirror and complement the area around this property that it is residential and that there is anticipation for community-friendly development of what was previously considered to be the Hope Mills South Course. This economic and regional impact of the proposed development fits within the vision and long-term outlook of the area in regards to economic development viability. Approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest because additional requested is, is compliments to proposed development of the de- adjacent parklands and surrounding area.
You have a motion? That was a motion. You have a second?
Second.
You have a motion, you have a second, we have any further discussion?
I, I was going to make, uh, like the mayor said, I know it read even as, uh, for the record. But before we take the vote, just letting everybody know that I met with some residents in here from the neighborhood up there. There would be no connection to the neighborhood, as you said, the manager stated. Does one make that clear before we take that, before we take that further?
Okay? Okay?
I live in that neighborhood as well. When, when I discussed it with a citizen that contacted me. Um, I even showed them the overhead site plan, like if there were concerns of Sushak being the connector. I was like, there's a house there. We can't base it off of what if the house torn down, or this house was sold, there's, there's that's a really, really big what, Ed. I mean, someone's living in there now. So we, we have to base off of what information we have, and even the developer said, there is no connector. There is no, what if the house is bought and torn down? We have to go off of what we have. And what we heard says, no connector, there is no connector.
I'd like to add too, um, and we said on the inside, but, um, I actually want to commend the members of the Gulf Acres community that actually reached out and called us. Uh, because if I live in that neighborhood and I saw something on social media, you don't know if that's true or not. And what we always ask, call us, engage us, email us. So we filled it, uh, Emily filled us several emails, which, which I forwarded to you guys in a sense of transparency to say, hey, we're getting these phone calls. I'm showing you that our staff is reaching back and actually explaining at length what is really going up the case. But I want you guys to know that as well, and to any citizen in the town. If you hear something, contact our mayor, contact our board, contact me, contact our department heads because we want to be and remain the source of valid and truthful information. The only thing I've said a million times, the only thing you're going to get from me is verifiable, fact-based information. I don't have an opinion, I will give you the data, I'm going to give you the facts, I will give you the information and let you form your own opinion. So I do commend the people that did hear about some of this stuff, but took the time to contact us to get clarification on those issues.
Mr. Craver?
The only thing I suggest is that when you do a public hearing, notice that if you had put on there, it was, is a change in conditions from, uh, single-family dwellings to, uh, townhomes. If you would have explained that, people that read it would understand, and you probably would not have all this.
Well, as I stated in, in an email correspondence, what I've stated in the email correspondence to you is that, based on general statute, it dictates what a public notice must include. The reason why we put the QR code in the packets on the sign so that you can access that detailed information through the packet. And so, um, there are certain requirements that lead into what a case heading is supposed to indicate. But the access is there. The access has been there for about two months. But if someone has further questions when they open the staff report to see the explanation of what the case, uh, request is for, that's what we hear. Um, if you go up to any, um, sign that you see on a piece of property where we're noticing, just walk up to that, uh, sign with your phone, point your camera, turn on your camera, point it at the sign, it takes you right to the website directly to your phone. We've been saying that for quite some time, um.
Okay, public hearing is closed, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion will carry for four to one. Thank you, Emily. Move on to the next case, which is under B. ZNG-005-25 rezoning of 049 plus or minus acreage from CP to R6A residential with more restrictive zoning for 2427 Appleberry Road. REID 0405960631000 submitted by Mike Adams with MAP Survey Inc. Applicant on behalf of Mac Brothers Tanyan LLC, owners of under cap six.
Can I, very briefly before we move on, can I clarify what the vote was on that last motion? It looked to be it was three to two, but I think it was.
Oh, we're going to. Oh, okay, did you vote against? Was it? Did you, you were four? Four?
Yeah. Four, one. Okay. I couldn't tell for you.
Yeah.
Townville Mills Staff Proceeds Request to rezonate 0.49 acres and entice to the parcel you mentioned. And they would like to rezonate to Oxford Bay Residential. Subject property adjacent to undeveloped commercial property, single-family homes, and across the street from players, mobile estate, mobile home park. Access will look like a V from Appleberry Lane. The town will find the planning board willing to manage this to recommend approval during the ready-to-startup meeting, April 14. The passage of lanes, uh, common land use plan, but for heavy commercial, this request does not fall within the current guidelines of the common land use plan. However, it does complement the surrounding area nicely. And across the street is residential as well as the adjacent property along Southwest border of subject property. There is, showing the location of the property that is near the intersection of Humble Lane and Road and Appleberry Lane. As you can see, there is water across the street. There is not sewer available unless BWC says otherwise, otherwise, um. As you can see, the zoning, the pink, purple color is residential, R6A, which is what the owner is asking to rezonate property to, and the stripes is CP commercial. And this is our, that's the common land use plan, showing the, the area that it is in. It's considered heavy commercial, or across the street is mixed use. And the area that's across the street is the mobile home park. And as you can see, this is the location of the property. Directly next door is single-family residential, commercial. And further down is Peter's Apartments down the street. Um, this is actually directly next door to the property that was annexed into the town recently. And it was the mobile home park of property. And this is a head-on vision of the property. So again, directly to the right is residential, uh, and that is the same owner of the property at this store. You have a question?
Okay, any questions from board before we open the public hearing? Motion to open the public hearing? Second? You have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of ZNG-005-25 rezoning? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of ZNG-005-25? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against ZNG-005-25? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against Seeing none, we have a motion to open the public hearing? Second? You have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, public hearing is now closed. If there's no further comments from the board, do we have action?
May I make a motion that we approve ZNG-005-25 for the rezoning request to the R6A residential zoning district in time? That even though the request is not consistent with South City's common land use plan, two thousand thirteen designation, this property designating this property, the requested R6A will complement the current future vision of town Hope Mills the economic and regional impact that proposed development fits within the vision and long-term outlook of the area in regards to economic development viability. Approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it's district requested complements the development of adjacent parklands and areas in this road area.
You have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Next item is C. I can see. ZNG-007-25 initial zoning of 0.73 plus or minus acreage to CP. CZ plant commercial with conditional zoning. CZ plant commercial with conditional zoning or more restrictive zoning for one four zero Missy Bird Drive, REID zero four two three one seven one four six nine zero zero zero, submitted by George Rose, DE, applicant on behalf of Joseph's House Owner, tab seven.
The town vote votes through the application request to initially zone point seven three acres of land to CP CZ, which is plant commercial condition zoning. Subject property is adjacent to undeveloped commercial property as well as developed commercial property, such as Eagles Auto Detailing and Power Washing, New Blue Electric and Plumbing Air. The conditions requested by the applicant include changing the front yard setback from fifty feet to forty-seven feet, access to the most ugly Missy Bird Drive, Cumberland County Joint Planning Board voting unanimously to recommend approval during their very scheduled meeting in April. South West Commonwealth Lane side calls for heavy commercial, this request does fall within current guidelines of the Southwest Commonwealth Lane side. There is a location of the property in purple. And as you can see, the policy is part of that property, so that's partially why they're asking to do a three-foot change in the front yard setback. As you can see, there is water available, and they plan to get access to PWC for this building. And we have that. And as you can see, it is completely surrounded by commercials from the county as well as, like, industrials from the town that is in blue. And it brings up residential everywhere. And this is our Southwest County Plan, everything is heavy commercial over there. Here is the value of the property, as the owner is undeveloped. That's surrounded by. So as mentioned, they are requesting to have a forty-seven foot front setback instead of fifty, and they will still adhere to the required thirty-foot rear and thirty-foot back yard setbacks.
Thank you, Emily. Any questions from board before we open the public hearing? Motion open the public hearing, second. All in favor? Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of ZNG dash zero zero seven dash two five? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of ZNG dash zero zero seven two five? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against ZNG dash zero zero, zero zero seven two five? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against ZNG dash zero zero seven two five? And motion, we have a second. Close the public hearing, all in favor? Public hearing is now closed. Any other comments from the board? If not, do we have an action?
May I make a motion to approve ZNG dash zero zero seven dash two five for the initial zoning request to the CP slash CZ plant commercial, the condition is only district and funds. But this request is consistent with Southwest Commonwealth Lane Plan two thousand thirteen designation, this property requested CP CZ will complement the current future vision of the townhood limits, the economic and regional impact of the proposed development. This within the vision of long-term outlook of the area in regards to economic development viability. Approval of the request is reasonable and in public interest because the district requested the compliments to development of adjacent properties in this surrounding area.
Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Our last item is under item D, case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five Cumberland County Parcel Identification Number zero four two three one seven zero two four eight zero zero zero, being all of lot four of the All American Business Park, as reported in Plant Book one nineteen, page one oh nine of the Cumberland County Registry. This is a contiguous annexation, is under tab eight.
The town vote votes voted to accept the petition for a contiguous annexation on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, submitted by George Rhodes on behalf of Don Broadwell, David Cashwell, Stingwell, South LLC, owners. Property is point seven five acres. Subject property is surrounded on all sides by commercial zone properties. Access to the property will be from Missy Bird Drive. Board Commissioners approved Resolution R two zero two five dash zero nine on April twenty-first of twenty twenty-five fixing public hearing to today's meeting. That's requesting authorization to proceed with initially zoning the property on CP plant commercial district. And it is directly across the street from the property that we just studied on Oak Mill. And it backs up to property that is inside the town limit, otherwise surrounded by commercial property. And, um, any questions?
In our, in our package it says, the pre-annexation, county county file up dash zero zero five, authorized staff to begin the initial zoning process. Is that what we're doing here? Or does it look like it's already been? That's all.
It's overriding us to begin the process of initial zoning of the property. So right now, you're going to annex it into the town. And then it's considered own zone, so that way we could process the tiny zoning, which would be intersecting with CP to match those surrounding.
So that's, that's all we're looking for tonight is just to approve the annexation and authorize, um, staff to proceed process.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion open by public hearing. Motion open the public hearing, second. All in favor? Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five? Is there anyone here like to speak against A twenty twenty-five dash zero five? Motion closed, second. All in favor? Public hearing is now closed. If there's no further comments, do we have an action by the board?
I make a motion to approve annexation A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, and authorize staff to begin the initial zoning process of business property. CP plant commercial district.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I, I see what he's talking about. It says, April twenty-first, we did the annexation. So is it annexation or is it approval to set a hearing for today for annexation?
It's when you pass the resolution for me to approve, do the sufficiency for the, yeah, that's what that they did.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about is this section of the presentation that says, Board of Commissioners approved the Resolution R twenty twenty-five oh nine on April twenty-first, fixing the public hearing for today to approve the annexation. And with that approval, she's asking also for authorization to start the initial zoning. Now, that does have to go through planning board to come back to you guys again for the petition, but what you are approving the annexation tonight and authorization to start the process.
Yeah, the first action was resolution to get to tonight.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's probably the simplest way to say it. Okay. Do we have action? All in favor? Motion second. Okay, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Move to item five, public comments.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments. Each speaker is required to state their name and address, and limit comments to three minutes. And the total comment period will be thirty minutes or less. Speakers should avoid repetition in groups. Should designate a spokesperson. Citizens should have signed up for the town clerk, police officer to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Please write comments to the full board, not an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in hearing your concerns, speakers should not expect board action or deliberation on subject matter brought up during the public comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. First up is Amanda.
Good evening. Amanda Ingram, four 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 nine Home Stakes Drive, Parkton, North Carolina. My comments refer to the renting out of Shelter Two, and I wanted to bring this to the board's attention as we are in the process of getting the budget and having it approved for next year. I know, I hope that the rental rates will be part of that discussion going forward. And I'm just curious, this is a kind of rhetorical question, because I know, can't answer it now. But I'm curious as to why to rent a shelter in Oak Mills. It costs a hundred and eighty dollars for four hours with a fifty-dollar deposit, which you pay back later, compared to Fayetteville, which to rent a shelter for four hours is ninety dollars. And that's for a non-resident, where there's actually a cheaper rate in Fayetteville. And I know that we are not Fayetteville, but I just feel that as a member of the town who's lived here for thirteen years, I just can't understand why there's such a price difference there. Especially in a time when we are trying to generate revenue, I feel that our shelters could be a good source of revenue. But I'm wondering if we're pricing townspeople out of renting these shelters by having such exorbitant prices. Forty-five dollars an hour may not seem like a lot, but when you add it up in comparison to the cost for a Fayetteville rental, it is quite high. I could rent a shelter in Fayetteville for half the price of renting one here in Oak Mills. And I have done that in the past. So I brought my concerns to somebody on the town staff, Andrea Wilkins, and I emailed asking about the amount of revenue generated from shelter rentals. I was not given that information. I was told to come to the Board of Commissioners meeting and ask about the shelter rental rate, and so here I am. With the loss of Shelter One as a possibility to rent due to the ball team that was implemented last year, I feel that that is revenue that has been lost for our town as well. And I feel like if the ball team is going to continue to have Shelter One, then at least it should be maintained. I was in there this weekend. I had taken my kids with a flash pad, because they were very excited that it was open. And I went to use the restroom, and there was no soap dispenser in the bathroom at all. And I felt that that was not something that our town, you know, should allow to happen with a shelter that is being rented or leased to a ball team. And so I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And the last thing that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, and not really anything to do with shelter rentals, but it's just kind of a test, mine as a teacher, is asking the town staff to better proofread things. I feel that it kind of looks bad on the town when official documentation like this agenda, like things that are posted on the keyboard are spelled wrong and grammatical errors. I know you mentioned that the pocket out, the bill placards at the lake have been corrected, but I feel like these little areas add up over time and kind of make our town not look great. So I'd like that to be addressed going forward.
Thank you very much. Rod, you're up next.
No, I was just gonna talk about the rezoning there again, some questions.
Okay. Next one is Vince. Next one is, is it AMI?
Oh, yeah. Hold on, pardon. Amir, yeah. Yeah. Before my time starts, I'd like to thank some people. In, as a town manager, you fall into three categories for the most part in any municipality. You're either public administration, zoning planning, development, or an attorney. I think that it's great to have an attorney on staff and a, somebody whose field and background has been that for the greater part of twenty years, along with the great Board of Commissioners, because it makes nonstop a power, at my point. She's not here, but I want to thank Emily for doing such a great job in her, in her area. She's probably beat up a lot with emails throughout the course of the week. So on the record, I'd like to thank them, Chief Tan and Chief Tom, for providing a great safe and wonderful community to us. So this is an impact statement. I can beat up the whole golf course thing for a while, which I do, I'm asking for you guys to please put a facility out there for this reason. Dear steam commissioners, as someone who has proudly served as a coach at Oak Mills Park since rank for over five years, I'm bringing to share firsthand insight in the growing needs of Oak Mills youth recreation programs. I've been involved both as a coach, the parents supporting my son and daughter in outdoor, indoor soccer, basketball, and wrestling. These programs have a tremendous impact on my family and many others. I strongly urge you to support the expansion of Oak Mills youth recreational facilities and services. Every week, I have privilege of working with youth athletes from across Oak Mills and surrounding communities. The kids show up with energy, heart, and real desire to grow, not just in sports, but teammates, leaders, and members of the community. But unfortunately, the space and resources available to support them aren't keeping up with the need. To give a few examples of what we're expecting, our outdoors, experiencing, our outdoor soccer players play on multi-purpose fields who are consistently geared as they are running and playing infield based stats instead of grass, the baseball field along with. Which are shared with soccer and football. We played a basketball, we played on a basketball court where the roof was leaking. Two trash cans had to be placed in the middle of the court to catch water while recreation staff members had to stand during the game in front of them to prevent accidents during this game, and space was extremely limited. During the basketball season, we routinely practiced four teams on a single court sharing just one hour. This makes it extremely difficult to provide space and time needed for meaningful and skill development team participation. Our wrestling team is by far the largest in the county, and we practice on just one mat. She puts on her forty kids, that's actually fifty-five, at a time. Despite these tight conditions, our volunteer coaches continue to give up. They're all helping these athletes become some of the most well-coached competitive in the region, second best in the state. That's my program. I won't send that one home. Once indoor soccer games begin, many of teams are forced to practice outside by the cleave over regardless of weather conditions, magnates, et cetera, because it is simply just, they have nowhere else to go. Baseball, the same. There's no place to practice in baseball or indoor soccer, because it is just so confined. Oak Mills needs more than just a few new fields. We need to improve multi-purpose indoor space, better lighting for evening practices, updated equipment, additional funding for staff to provide the support. The demanding growth is fast. We have a real opportunity needed head-on before we lose the momentum, retention, and enlistment that has taken the years beyond. Youth recreation is about more than just sports. It keeps kids safe, builds confidence, teaches discipline and concerns, appuses road models, but also parents' peace of mind and brings their, together investing in this new means, excuse me, investing in this town means investing in Oak Mills forever. I hope you seriously consider this and will stake, I missed out, excuse me. I hope you'll seriously consider what is state and champion the effort and youth recreation of Oak Mills. For where I stand on the sidelines, the need is clear and the potential is even clearer. Thank you for your time and leadership. Coach Jennifer Eaton, she coaches five sports, that's just one. I've got sixty more of these over the, from Friday alone, I hosted a meeting, excuse me, Thursday. I hosted a meeting. I'm not gonna read all sixty. It's not gonna happen. But, um, we are growing exponentially. As you see, I think the only thing that Lon and I did agree on so far is, you know, another four hundred units kind of seems a little outrageous. However, with that comes more children, more children, and if we don't want to turn into Fayetteville's issue, let's give these kids purpose. Let's give these kids some space to run around. Take their energy in a positive manner, rather than potentially being one of the key challenges issues in the future.
Thank you, Coach Martin.
Oh, I'm gonna take that one there for me, all the way.
Yes, all the way. Started off small with vision running.
Yeah.
Ended up Thursday with passion review. Diana Simmons is next.
Can you press the button, Emily? Hi, my name is Diana Simmons. I'm at forty-three sixty-three Dominique Street. I'm one of those coaches that Mel was just talking about. I have been coaching for a little over ten years. I have three kids that have. I have three kids that have played in all the sports. Which is, I think that having a facility, a better facility for our kids to play in or coach in, it does, it does numbers for the kids. Whenever I was a kid, I didn't have stuff like that, so I found other ways to, other stuff to do. And I'm, I want to give kids a definitive route, and sports is very important. So I'm just gonna read that right. I've coached for ten plus years. I've coached several sports, all ages, and I know it's just a game to some people, to kids, it's much more. The rec center helps kids find new friends from all over. It helps kids become more social, and after the pandemic, being locked up, we all know that's important. The rec center also gives kids a chance to play sports regardless of their talent. Doesn't matter if you're, you never played or not, no school you have to play. You've had to have some experience. I asked one, one of my kids, what, what, how he feel if we didn't have that rec center anymore, and he was like, that would be devastating if that's what we, that's what I look forward to going there. So having a bigger rec center somewhere else to have more sports, especially since y'all are already putting those condos in, or whatever, that's gonna prove, we're gonna definitely need more. It also will generate more money because you can do tournaments for, I play softball right now. You have tons of tournaments, you have districts, you put your bid in for districts, stuff like that. It brings so much revenue, revenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker we have for public comments will go into item six, consent agendas, item A, B, and C. We have a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C. Have you heard from Don, A, B, and C? Second, in discussion before we vote, none, all in favor? Being none opposed, consent agenda is approved. That's the end of the consent agenda. We go to item seven, old business, there are none, which brings us to item eight. Item A, authorizing the town manager to execute contract with tribal engineering for inspection services and continual use monitoring of remote instrumental station equipment for the Oak Mills Dam under tab twelve.
I think Don Sisco from Public Works will speak to this later. Hi, Don. This is just a continuation of contract services that we have with tribal engineering from the development of the dam. As y'all know, they are the engine of record, and we have meant, or we have kept them on board through annual inspections and also making that, keep the observation of the sentiment metrics, which is a remote fire burning environment that we're trying to have within the dam that keeps track of things like water pressure, sewage, services and stuff like that.
Thanks, Don. One key comment about this contract, and it's in the packet, the term for the new contract is for five years. And like you said, they are the engineer formal record, and they've been providing inspection services and tracking data since, since inbounded water in the lake. So they're, so they're gonna get a new five, five-year contract. Any questions, comments for the board?
Yes, sir. When we go get our clock back, I'm coming along.
They took that clock off because they're gonna put pictures on there. They just put all the mayor's pictures back up. So ahead, they take the clock down.
But what was the total on that? Seventy-five?
Seventy-two thousand dollars.
But that's for the whole five years. But that's for...
Okay, waiting on Mr. Swallow to come back. Any other questions for Don? Do we have a motion?
We don't make a motion. We authorize town manager to execute the attached contract for inspection services for continued use and monitoring of remote construction equipment for the Oak Mills Dam.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? See, none opposed motion carries. Thank you, Don. Next item is item B, approving budget amendment number thirty-two for fifteen thousand five hundred dollars for several costs associated with the purchase. Funds to be allocated from the drug forfeiture account and insurance proceeds under tab thirteen. Drew?
Okay, I'm just doing a clarification. The budget amendment section for eleven thousand five hundred dollars, not fifteen five hundred. That's typed on the front sheet. The budget movement itself does say eleven five. So I'm just making that clarification. If you've got specific questions about what the budget movement is for, the police can answer that.
Chief?
So ten thousand dollars out of that is paid for by an insurance company. Only have to put ten nine and write it down. The U.S. listed an insurance conference fund for ten thousand, so really it's just fifteen hundred out of asset forfeiture, the cost of the, of the dog. I should probably note that out of all five dogs, that's the only cost of that. We, we had all dogs that had been donated up until this point for free. All food is donated for free and all vet care is donated for free, so it's really self-sufficient.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments from the board? May I approach that?
Do any toys need to be donated to the dogs?
Yeah, we could always use combs or balls or something.
Okay, 'cause I met that fluffy puppy and I was like, oh.
The bloodhound?
No, no, the, the new one.
Oh, a bloodhound?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a pitahama. Yeah, I said it didn't get the count.
Yeah, but a whole bunch of, I'd like to donate to. Okay, sure.
Have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve budget amendment number thirty-two in an amount of eleven thousand five hundred dollars for several costs associated with the purchase, the purchases from the drugs forfeiture fund.
The motion have a second, all in favor? Seeing none opposed motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Drew. Moving on to item nine, which is a discussion item. A, consideration of homelessness advisory committee's request for weekly marquee usage under, there's no, no attachments? Is, are you gonna address? Okay, Commissioner Craver?
At our last meeting, I brought this up, that the committee wanted to use the marquee at least one day a week, but since they do not have any money yet, they can't afford to pay for it. And the continuum of care, David Brown has given us a special number, not just for the homeless, but anyone that is having trouble or needs help can call this number. It bypasses all the other numbers that they have to go to this one and then transfer to this one. And they will take their information down and will get them in the right direction for the help that they need. So they asked me to ask the board if by chance that y'all would waive the fee for the use of the marquees at least one day a week for, until that we can get money to stop paying.
You wanna know what everyone's day is?
I just ask them to have some of this stuff, it's like, if we display the other bits on my face, like the gun mouth and stuff up there, it's, you get the problem with the doorway, but we don't pay. It's just, it's like a town like box and thing. We just put it up there. We just ask them to have something for the marquee.
Yeah, I bet they would, we have to, since we didn't have money to pay or to have to waive the fee or what.
Now, we just, it's just advertising, a lot of the other things we get going.
They could do that if I wanted to really get and say, you know, whatever they gonna say, you know, if you need help, call this town.
Yeah, that's a question to ask, but can you get it a more market?
You have a boat.
Now, do you want both marqués?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're asking for both of them.
Typically, I mean, I'm kind of with Mayor Otel. It's a town committee. I mean, it's really us advertising, so I mean, I really think it should be a charge. Only thing I would notice that if it's this sign out there in front of the safety, the fire department typically manages that sign, and if it's a sign that's late, blocks away. So I would say that if you have a message that you want to send, send it to those two correspondents, it's just shared in this place.
All right, thank y'all very much. They'll be happy to hear that.
Item ten, committee liaison reports, Commissioner Brian Marley first.
Thank you, Mayor. The HBC did meet last week. They still got a couple of major projects they're working on. The problem is they're kind of in the homes of the man right now due to funds, waiting on the new budget year to come in. So that, that kind of puts a damp on things. They did have a request that I sent to, I talked to town manager about and park director director to use some remaining funding in their budget to try to do some removal of carpet in that building. But I did relay their request to the town manager and the park director director, and they should be reaching out to Ms. Reese, which is the community chief. So other than that, just wait and see. Yeah, there was, every time there was some kind of, I guess, leak or backup, something. So that, that was one of the reasons why they were requesting to get into it. But like I said, I, I relate all that to manager. I think you were gonna reach out.
We, we thought I was gonna reach out to Ms. Reese, but we did clarify that it weren't following the park director department. And so Mr. Marson is aware of the request and then would just basically go through the HBC to fulfill the request, but I think he did talk about there were some conversations on the condition of the wood under the carpet and things like that. But they are gonna basically, you know, look into the request.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Commissioner Craver?
The homeless committee met on, on May the eleventh, and we had, all the committee members were there with the exception of Ron. And they approved the logo. We have a beautiful logo, and now they are working on a Facebook page. They, I mean, they're just talking about so much stuff, it's really goes over my head to what they're talking about, talking to people about bringing in housing and this type of thing. But they do want to take part in one of the Fourth of July activities as far as having a table and selling baked goods and things like that, to help raise some money. But I'm sure that the person in charge of that, Lori Hudson, will be in touch to sign up and that kind of thing. On that, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Lake?
We have not had a meeting recently. So I have nothing to, unless somebody had a meeting, I didn't go.
Yeah, we have one tomorrow. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the twenty.
Sorry. Commissioner Lake? Commissioner Swallow?
Thank you, Mayor. So for my air quality ambassadors committee, we haven't had a meeting yet. Upcoming. For FAMFO, my meeting is not until the twenty-eighth, so that's coming up as well. For the Chamber of Commerce, our next event, of course, is the golf tournament. I completed the, getting our worst player trophy put together today. It's for the Happy Gilmore trophy. Yes, you suck too. And on the trophy, it says, you suck, you jackass. That's from the Happy Gilmore movie, not my words. I quote Happy Gilmore. So you too can win your own Happy Gilmore trophy. It's gonna be a good event. We have, I don't know how many teams off the top of my head, but we have a lot of pool sponsors. How many? I'm not sure. How, is that one side of your teams? We have two teams.
We have two. I think the count is at fourteen. Fourteen, which is, it's a living game, increasing selection.
Yeah, yeah. Last year wasn't as good, I think with the weather that first day, so this year it's gonna be a lot better. It's gonna be a fun event. If you've never done golf, trust me, you don't have to be a good player to play Chamber of Commerce golf, so. Hey, I speak from experience, truly. What's that? Is there spots open? Do we have any spots?
Oh, I can't.
Oh, well, hey, that didn't stop me. I was like, take a different role, but yeah, so it's a good time. That's our, our closest upcoming event, the golf tournament, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Swallow, may I approach him, Dr. McCray?
For the cultural arts committee, we have not met in two months because Mayor, you keep doing your talk it out, the same day and time that our meeting is supposed to happen, but again, just trying to see if we can get a break to come through, get a big mural done for that. Problem, looks like I said, the basic stages they're doing right now is trying to get ready for this event on Saturday. And economic development, we are every three months now, so we have a next, my last report.
Thank you very much. May I approach him, Dr. McCray? The only report I have from committees is, well, two. Parks and Rec Advisory Committee is gonna be Tuesday, May twenty-seven, so that'll be the next one, so I'll report on that in June. Mayor's Coalition met May ninth at Spring Lake. Economic Development update, we had a report from the Garrison Commander from Fort Bragg Colonel Nixon and Command Sergeant Major Daniel Scott. United Way, Cumberland County Leadership Program by Scott Enle presented a presentation that's pretty much like he did here. He also had a presentation, Cumberland County Health Department Food Assessment Data by Dr. Depena McCray, and that was really, really informational. Item, the next item we have was a joint city-county emergency management presentation by Laura Smith, City of Fayetteville, and Gary Crumler from Cumberland County. That, that presentation is excellent. In fact, we have invited them to do that very same presentation June sixteenth here in our boardroom. It really is, it's, it's a very, very nice presentation, and you'll, you'll get a lot of information from that. Then the last presentation was Rulak from Van Henson, Executive Director, some roundtable discussions, German. Our next meeting will be August eighth, twenty-twenty-five, at City of Fayetteville. That's my last report. We're done with committee liaison reports. Item eleven is next. Are we allowed to ask questions?
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to conduct the closed session pursuant to NCGS one-four-three, three-eighteen, eleven-eighty-three, to consult with attorney on matters within the attorney's client privilege and pursuant to NCGS one-four-three, three-eighteen, eleven-eight-six, discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion, we have a second? All in favor? Motion carries. We're gonna go into closed session. We'll be back as quick as we can. Don't go anywhere. All right. All right, let me go in. I know how to do it. Yeah. Gentlemen, go back in session.
Not everybody, right.
Actually, we live.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Just return from closed session. May I present?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, because the other minute of the closed session is such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session from our actual safety.
Thank you very much. Last item is reports and information items, of course, tomorrow night at six AM over in the Fire Department base at the state of the town. Wednesday morning, coffee with the Cumberland County Commissioners at the Parks and Rec Building, eight o'clock. And then, uh, next Tuesday is a joint meeting with Parents Commission, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Those are the next couple of meetings. Um, don't forget about Monday, Memorial Day, uh, ceremony, four o'clock over in the park. Any staff concerns? I see none. Staff want to leave? I see yes. Do they have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion, have a second. Our meeting is adjourned, thank you very much. All right.